Good evening. Thank you for coming to Albany City Council Meeting on Wednesday, April 18th, April 10th, excuse me, 2024 at 6:00 PM. It's bright and sunny outside, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, okay, roll call, please. Allison.
Counselor Montague.
Here.
Counselor Scheth.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Ovak.
Here.
Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Kopinski.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Thank you. I'm here.
So, getting right into the agenda, on the third item is your special presentations, Tree City USA Award, Parks and Merc Director, Kim LaDain.
All right. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am joined by the amazing Jay Sharp, who is our city forester. We just wanted to have an opportunity to come up and brag a little bit about our urban forestry program and the work that this community supports and that Jay and the rest of the team does. So, I'll turn it over to Jay.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, everybody, for having me. So, this award comes from the Arbor Day Foundation, which is a nonprofit with a stated mission of inspiring people to plant, nurture, and celebrate trees. The Tree City USA Award requires four standards to maintain a tree board, to have a community tree ordinance, spend at least $2 per capita on urban forestry, and celebrate Arbor Day. When we apply every year, we report our program's accomplishments and what resources were required to achieve them. So, in 2023, that's the year we were awarded for. Our program planted 273 street trees and park trees. We began restoring historic apple trees in North Albany. We pruned dozens of trees for clearance, health, and structure. And we held educational events for high school students and OSU students. And we responded quickly to tree hazards to protect life and property. And just in closing, I want to say that communities with a healthy urban forest have less pollution, lower summer temperatures. We spend less money on heating and cooling and healthier wildlife populations. So, by committing to our urban forests, we're also committing to the health and well-being of everybody here in Albany. So, congratulations, everybody. Thank you for having me.
Well done.
And if it's okay, I think Jay should keep this because it's going to need to be something he looks at to celebrate the victories every day, if that's all right, on his desk. We've already got the Tree City USA plaque up there from when we were awarded originally in 1994. And in case you didn't know or notice, if you drive in and out of towns by the welcome signs, you'll see the Arbor Day Foundation Tree City USA signs and our 30-year sticker is now on there. So, thank you very much, Jay, for everything that you do. And thank you, Rick. They're the powerhouse team, and I'm just very appreciative of all the work and very thankful that they've chosen to be our tree team here in Albany.
Well done. Congratulations. Next, Director LaDain.
I'm going to sit here again.
So, next, Item B on Item Three would be Volunteer Appreciation Awards. Director LaDain will be sharing those with us.
All right. So, normally police and fire do the presentations, and this is the first time we're handing over awards. So, thank you for your support in advance, because I'm a little rusty. I don't know what this looks like. So, April is Volunteer Appreciation Month, and we are so lucky in the Parks and Recreation Department as we have people who give their time to us to help our community and our department be better. And so, volunteers help everywhere. We have our volunteers at the Riverfront Community Center, working in the café, doing blood drives. We have special event volunteers that are, some of them are right actually, out here in our audience right now, that are helping to make things move smoothly and provide a really welcoming presence. But I, and we have many others. But I really want to honor two specific groups tonight that have gone above and beyond. And to tell you the truth, this awards, these awards are probably a year or two too late. But that's okay. We're here now, and this is what makes sense. So, the first one I would like to invite up, I'm calling them the Therapeutic Spa Collective. So, come on up, Monica Kasp, Baxter, I feel like you, no, no, all right. So, these are just two of the wonderful folks. In case you all don't know, Albany Community Pool is our pool. It is owned by the school district, but we've been operating it. And until last year, there was about a 40-year-old-plus, above-ground hot tub that was in there and was in desperate need to go away. And it eventually did because we didn't have the money or the resources to replace it. But even far before that, Monica, this wonderful woman here, it was her dream to create a completely accessible therapeutic spa that will make it possible not only for older adults or people recovering from surgeries, folks in our adaptive community, and even kiddos, just people who need to rest their sore muscles to be able to get in and have that experience. So, Monica designed it and then started this kind of grassroots group. They've collected pop cans on the side of the road. They have created countless crafts, rummage sales, spoken to the right people. All in all, this group, you really have. We have, they've raised over $200,000 specifically for a spa that our department would not have had on our radar the money, the ability to touch at all. And then on top of that, they have continued to write grants and got us about another $30,000 through the Parks and Recreation Foundation so that we have accessible lifts for not only the spa, but Albany Community Pool, the main pool, as well as Cool Pool. And so, these are just two of the wonderful folks. Tom Cope is not here, as well as Julie Hadley, who is the crafter extraordinaire. Cass has worked tirelessly on grant applications and trying to figure out how we can better position ourselves. And Monica is, she, this should be the Weber Spa when it happens. So, so just on behalf, I want to thank you all, the collaborative. In recognition for your countless hours and work towards the creation of the therapeutic spa, this project is where it is today because of your grassroots vision, creativity, and enduring dedication. So, we just signed the contract with the school district for completing engineering plans, which will get it ready so that we can actually go out to bid and hopefully have it go under construction. So, stay tuned, but thank you all very much. Thank you so much. I'll take those pictures out there.
Okay.
All right. And then the dynamic duo. I'm going to bring you up together, if that's all right. Please come on up, Jill and Chuck.
Hey, Jay!
So, even, so I've been here five years in June. And when I came on board and we were transitioning, my predecessor said, "You got to meet Jill." And I was like, "Okay, tell me about Jill." And she was like, "Oh, she's the powerhouse behind Adopt a Park." And that is 100%, there's, that's the only way to describe you. So, while these two are standing up here, I do need to say that our Adopt a Park program is a large program. 27, 28 of our 33 parks have been adopted this year.
33.
See, I don't even have the updated numbers. All 33 of the parks have been adopted by either individuals, organizations, civic groups. It can be people walking by and picking up garbage. It can be people out there planting and weeding. It could be people out there hacking down blackberries, cleaning things up, painting over graffiti, everything in between. But that didn't happen in our department. That happened right here with volunteer power and passion and vision. And so, I'm hoping that they will accept these words on behalf of all of the other hard-working volunteers who are out there, who are not with us tonight. But they really need to be bragged about because these two are the face of it. And they have, for years, been doing the work. If we had them on payroll, we wouldn't be able to afford to keep them. So, they work that well and that hard. So, Jill, like I said, created the program. She is our volunteer coordinator for our Adopt a Park. Anybody who's interested, they're, she's given out her cellphone, her email address. Like, she is out there. She is the face of this organization. And just a lot of the heart behind it. And then Chuck, we are just so excited that you decided to spend your time and passion and sweat equity with us. As Chuck is out at all of our parks, probably as much as our staff probably see him on quite a few of their rotations. Chuck is very instrumental in graffiti hunters out there, painting to make sure that we have spaces that look beautiful and that represent our community well. There are all of the community events, just can't thank you guys enough. So, on behalf of our department, in gratitude and grateful recognition of your enduring dedication to our community and the Albany Adopt a Park program, due to your efforts, Albany is a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. So, I want to thank you both so very much in front of council, in front of our community. I'll let you know that these guys are the real deal and that we are so thankful to have them.
So, first of all, I want to say we started with Adopt a Park. We now have the graffiti chasers, and we now have a group, new group called the Diggers, the Plant Trees. But none of this would have happened without him and Rick and Jay, who have shown us an enormous amount of patience and support. And so, it wouldn't have happened without you guys. Thank you.
No, thank you. And with that, thank you very much. We're going to go take pictures of them so we can brag on social media.
Our thanks to all of you that donate to time and effort and grant writing to make this place a great neighborhood and safe city. And our appreciation is wonderful. Monica, thank you. From our first mention, you were like determined.
Yeah.
Next, well, we'll let them exit. Next on tonight's agenda is Business from the Public. Thomas Prizlak, is he here this evening? Did I pronounce his name correctly? We can come back to him when he does arrive. Next is Ben Achley. Am I saying that correctly? Thank you. National Day of Prayer.
On Grand Pray Road, some of you may say, "That guy looks a little bit familiar." I was with the Albany Police Department for 23 years, and I retired in 2010. And I'm glad that I'm still in the community. What I'm here about is National Day of Prayer. It was first instituted by President Harry Truman in 1952 by a joint council or a joint resolution by the Congress. It is the first Thursday of every May. We, as your local community, I'm one of a group of pastors that head up our local National Day of Prayer. And I want to give you an invitation. First of all, our church, Eastside Christian Church, is the host church for the Lynn County Commissioners' Prayer Breakfast, which will happen on May 2nd from 8:00 to 9:00. And I guarantee you, you'll have the best biscuits in town. But we have, throughout the day, we will have events in churches. But we'll also have events in what is known as the Seven Spheres of Influence that is prayed over during the National Day of Prayer. One of those being government. And we will be right here at City Hall at 1:00 PM with a group of prayer warriors to pray over our government. So, at this time, I'd like to give you an invitation that shows all of our events and ask you if you would like to come to one or all. We would love to pray over you, and I would love to feed you because nobody goes away from our prayer breakfast hungry. So, that's our invitation to you, and I'll pass these out if that's okay.
Thank you, Pastor. All the dates and times around here were perfect. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Next is Brad Davis, Red Light Cameras.
My writing's not very good. Brad Dennis.
I'm sorry, Brad Dennis.
So, I've been in favor of safety along North Albany Road near the middle school for more than 40 years. When my two sons walked to school, there were no flashing lights at the time. Of course, it was part of Benton County, not the city of Albany. So, I've been in favor of improving safety for quite some time. It was quite an effort to get even a flashing light back in the mid-'80s. So, my question, now that we're going to the red light cameras, is whether there will be a visible warning before people actually get to the intersection. I, myself, don't live up the hill, so I'm not, as I leave my driveway, I'm not going to be coming down the hill at great speed. But I'm wondering if the intent is to raise money or is the intent to provide better safety? Anyhow, I would hope that there might be some sort of a visible warning before cars are just there and we've got a lot of people getting mad. I'd like to also recommend that there be a separate fund, some sort of a designated operations fund created so that the income that is generated from this goes into its own fund, and the expenses associated with staffing or court costs come out of that fund so that we can see very definitely a net impact of these cameras. And that I'd also like to ask someone on the council, if this hasn't already been done, to introduce a resolution to dedicate the net income to road maintenance that would be over and above what's already part of the normal budget. And then I checked with the police department today. I was curious if people who are given speeding tickets, if they have a, an expired tag on their car, will they also be cited for that? I'm just amazed at how many people don't feel that they have an obligation to pay for updating their car registration. And so, I'm wondering, as they're looking at the pictures, would they notice whether or not it's an expired license? The police department didn't know if they would be doing that. I guess they're waiting for a new officer to be hired. But I guess in closing, well, one more thing. Will there be a schedule of fines posted so that you already know ahead of time, "Yeah, I'm going 10 miles over. It's going to be, you know, 50 bucks or whatever"? Just will people know what they're in for? And that also that there be some sort of an annual report given to the community that lists all of these things?
Thank you. And we'll be addressing it, responding during Business from the Council.
Right.
Thank you, sir. Director Vingrato, Albany Downtown Association Executive Director, excuse me.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to do a quick downtown update. We've got a few things that have already happened. One, I wanted to thank everyone who participated in the Albany Taps and Caps. That was last Saturday, and that was a fundraiser for Furniture Share. If you don't know what a Furniture Share is, it's kind of like a food share, but it's a bank of furniture for people who are, find themselves in need. And also their Beds for Kids program, getting kids off the floor and into beds. So, you can support them all year round, not just at their periodic fundraisers. Coming up is our Mixology Madness. That's one of the fundraisers for the Downtown Association. That's coming up on April 21st. It's a Sunday afternoon or Sunday evening. And local bartenders will be surprising us with cocktails. And about halfway through, we'll find out who they, who they are. And then we can applaud them and enjoy some more for the evening. It's going to be at Ciberus, so it'll be a fun evening of food and camaraderie. Downtown Restaurant Week starts on the 21st as well and runs that whole week. If you don't know, we now have 30 places in downtown where you can eat, whether you prefer pastries or beverages or a full meal. We have so many choices for you in downtown Albany. Wanted to mention that Albany Civic Theater has a play in process right now. It's called The Prom. I'm hearing good things. It runs this weekend, the 12th through the 14th. Again, next weekend, the 18th through the 21st, and closes out at the end of the month on the 25th through the 27th. Our newsletter is dedicated to our amazing volunteers this month, and we thank all of them for everything they do. We have a downtown cleanup and when we hang our wonderful Mother's Day flower signs coming up on April 28th. And then the flower baskets will be back hung up on May 19th. So, all kinds of good things. Our volunteer spotlight highlighted Oscar Holt. Among his accolades are being on the Landmarks Commission, a director and president at the Albany Downtown Association and on the Monti Society. Recently, he was recognized with a statewide Historic Preservation Award, and he'll receive that in person next week. So, lots more events coming up. It's the Diaper Drive this month. There's a drag night going on down at Kalapuiya on the 20th. Skate in the Street is April 21st. And we were excited to have the Albany Arts Commission run their first show on First Friday here, and I understand they'll be doing that on the First Fridays coming up for whatever artists are on display. So, I think I'm done.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
And next is Sean Lane. This is Event Policy Changes.
Yes. Thank you. My name is Sean David Lane. I work here in Albany, and I've lived in the Willamette Valley since I was about eight years old. So, this community is very important to me. I work as an employee of LifeTrack LLC and Interguidance Services, which are psilocybin, which is a psilocybin service center which specializes in psychedelic-assisted therapy, which is largely here to help people that have or struggle with PTSD, depression, anxiety, addiction, things like that. I can provide relief for. My main concern is a new standard for issuance, 7.28.260. Specifically, the section where it says, "The director shall issue a permit when it is found that the proposed activity or use for public use does not include elements that are unlawful in federal court." Now, voters in Albany and throughout all of Oregon voted to approve the legalization of psilocybin for use within service centers, such as the one that I work at. It is still, however, illegal federally. But I think it's unfair that this issuance would stop us from going around and, you know, advertising and letting people know about our services that can be very helpful, especially as Albany is a, among many things, a town of veterans, and veterans disproportionately are affected by things like PTSD. And this would prevent us from having booths at events that we've already gone to, such as Albany Pride, which we were at last year. And with such a new industry, there's nowhere else in the country that's really doing what we do. Outreach is incredibly important, and this really affects our ability to do that. And this is something that we believe in, work we believe in very deeply. You know, we're not here to make money. We're here because we want to help people. The owner of the business that I work for, Dee Lafferty, also runs a therapy business that she's been doing for many, many years. She opened the facility because she believes in psilocybin's ability to help people who have been struggling, people who have disorders that they were told are treatment-resistant. And as someone who works at this facility, I've seen firsthand the good that this can do. And we've had people like veterans, people of color, people that are part of the LGBT community, these underserved communities. And this ordinance affects our ability to reach out to them and be able to help them and get them the assistance that they really need. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your explanation. We'll be addressing that during Business from the Council as well. Okay? Thank you. Next on the agenda, Item Five is Adoption of the Consent Calendar. Council?
I move we adopt the consent calendar as written.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry about that delay. All those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you. And as luck would have it, Business from the Council. So, I started with Ward Three last time, I believe. I'll start with Ward, I'll just bounce back and forth. Councilor Ovak.
All right. Thank you. Three quick things. I'll try to be quick. First of all, with regard to what Mr. Dennis shared and the red light safety ideas, I like what he had to say, and I accept that I don't think people should be cited for anything other than the purpose of that particular citation. I can't think of the word I want, citation taker. Like, if it's a red light situation, then only if you ran the red light. If it's speeding, only if you sped, not if your tags are out of date. I just think that's, that's not right. People wouldn't be expecting that, and it's bad enough when you get a ticket. So, that's all. But I think those are really good ideas, especially the dedicated fund for road maintenance. I love that. Secondly, I have a letter from a constituent that I would like to read into the record. and I'm going to read this precisely as written, so please know grammatically, I'm reading this as written. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm unable to make it to the council meeting tomorrow night. This was written yesterday. But would like to voice my opinion for the record to city council on the proposed North Albany subdivision on Gibson Hill Road. Like many of my friends' opinions on this topic, is not taken lightly. Recently, in an article written by Hasso Haring, he explains that the subdivision was planned for 22 home sites in the Riverwood Crossing subdivision. The zoning is RS-10, designated for homes to be put on 10,000 square foot lots, which was approved by the city. On March 5th... Now, this is my note. That was a Tuesday, not the date of a council meeting. The city received a request to change the designation to 80 narrow lots and put in town homes. How is this possible that they already put in the underground utilities before asking for a request? Does anyone take into account for the amount of traffic that will be added to the North Albany bridges that will already be backed up? Something seems fishy that planning did not have time to approve these changes, and the developer put in the utilities without city approval? I understand there is a housing crisis and that the state of Oregon approved changes for middle housing land divisions, but this does not make sense. Did city council know about this, or has it just ran through the building departments? My ask, that this is brought up at the city council meeting on behalf of Ward 1. How come only people who live within 100 feet of this subdivision get a say? This will affect everyone in North Albany. So I will forward this to you, Allison. I would likewise request that the letter we all received this evening from Thomas Prislak be read into the record, or at least entered into the record.
Is it?
Not just with an asterisk, but so that people can read it?
It'll be in the minutes.
Oh, but the letter itself, just as I have asked that the letter I read aloud be entered into the minutes, that means the words are in the minutes, right?
No, not in the minutes. What happened is, any material that the council uses to make a decision that did not appear in the agenda published is attached to the... Excuse me. Attached to the agenda after the meeting, and it's archived.
All right. But my question is, people who want to read the words that were written would be able to locate those words?
Certainly.
Great. That's what I wanted to confirm. Thank you so much. All right. So, that was two things, and the last one is, it's a big day for Parks and Rec and for pickleball players. Just want to say, this morning, my sister and I joined 18 friends playing at Hackelman Park for the first time in, I don't know, it seems like 100 years, but not quite. It was beautiful. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Novak. Councilor McGee?
Yes, I have one thing. It's in regards to information being in the minutes as well regarding if a question is asked by a counselor, a constituent reached out. If a question is asked by a counselor, and the staff member or the person presenting doesn't necessarily have an answer, a specific answer for the question that is being asked by the counselor, is there a way to make sure that those inquiry, those questions asked by said counselor are entered into the minutes?
Minutes are not verbatim transcript of the meeting, and we can't always pull out what's going to pop up later in the meeting and what may gain traction after the meeting. But we believe that staff is aware of that kind of transaction, and when there's something outstanding to cancel, that's part of what staff does.
So there's no way to have the questions, like if I ask the question, well, obviously because you just said it's not verbatim? Okay. I guess that's the answer. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I add to Allison's response, that the video is available, and you can link to it, and they can see the question and hear the question that was being asked. If it's a question that requires follow-up action, I take note of that, and I follow up from a staff perspective. So I'm not sure if that answers Councilor McGee's question.
It does. That is a little bit of clear... And thank you, Allison, I appreciate that. I will be sure to tell them to ensure that they review the video, and if there's a follow-up that you would reference that question and bring that information back.
And also, I would add that staff is to respond to those questions to the council, correct?
What was that question, Mayor?
Staff is... If a council asks a person of staff a question, they are to respond?
Yeah, if I can answer that question immediately, I will. Oftentimes, however, I'll have to ask you for a couple of weeks while I go back and talk to whatever staff person has the answer for you.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was sort of the concern, that those questions that we're asking, considering, I think, a couple meetings ago, we had quite a few questions from the council, and then, of course, those questions weren't necessarily in writing in the minutes. And so, the constituent just was concerned that those questions were not necessarily going to be answered or answered at some point. So they just wanted to know if those specific questions could be in the minutes, but I can direct them to the video.
And I would suggest also that as a backup, it helps to have email sent either to the counselor, who can then forward it to me, or straight to me. In the course of a council meeting, while we try to take notes, those notes might be imperfect and might not capture the question.
Sure. Okay. Thank you all.
Is that it, Councilor?
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor. Yep.
Thank you very much. Councilor Montague?
Oops. Hi. First off, I want to extend an apology to staff for us not getting this right the first time, and appreciate the rework that happened behind the scenes. That said, I will move to consider amending ordinance 6039, and that is due to, as you heard the gentleman earlier talking about the concerns about us limiting their ability to get the word out for psilocybin and other things. I think that the small sentence in here is not needed, and I would like to have that removed due to the concerns that were brought up. And apologies, we didn't catch that the first time.
We have staff bring back a new resolution with that?
Is there an opportunity for questions?
Can I second it?
How about if I have a question?
Let her finish. Let her finish.
I think that it needs to be seconded, and then we have discussion, I believe, is what the... Yes!
I would like to second your motion, Councilor Montague.
Thank you. And now we can discuss.
We'll discuss it. I agree with you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may...
It's an ordinance, correct?
There's... Really, what we're talking about is a special event permit. Now, the therapy that we're taught, that is the subject of this, is highly regulated by the state, and it can only happen under supervision and in certain places. We're not talking about that. We're talking about a special event permit, which could happen on a street or in a park, and you can talk about anything you want at that event. However, that language is unnecessary, but this change is also unnecessary. So I just want to assure people know that this is not... This would not be precluded, even if the ordinance remained the same. But it's a small matter to change the ordinance, and we're prepared to do that. And I would invite Sean to comment further, if there's anything further.
I mean, I'm happy to comment further if there's questions on it. I mean, I'll second what Peter said. The language isn't necessary to be in there. On the other hand, the amendment, does it mean... This language, I suspect, is language that's around the country, and normally it will say not that something in violation in federal court, but something along the lines of something that is in violation of federal law. So I'm not sure that language came from about federal court. I suspect the majority of the ordinances that have that language in there was aimed at marijuana use, because it is a Schedule I substance still under federal law, but it's legal in many states around the country now. However, it does not prohibit people to talk about marijuana, or have a rally in support of the usage of marijuana, or psilocybin for that matter. On the other hand, if this... Just because we strike this language out does not mean you can go smoke marijuana in Montee's Park, or administer psilocybin in Montee's Park. You can talk about them, you can talk about the benefits of it and how you support it, but you can't still use it. So, like Peter said, it's six in one hand, half a dozen the other. I mean, it doesn't hurt to take the language out. That doesn't require us to... I mean, it doesn't matter one way or the other. So... But if the council chooses to take it out, that's fine. I mean, yeah.
So it doesn't impact the psilocybin advocates from having a booth at Pride or any other event?
As long as they're not handing out psilocybin and administering it. I mean, it's like I think Peter said, and maybe the citizen spoke, it's heavily regulated. I think, last I heard, I believe Albany's... Oregon's still the only state in the country that has approved the usage of it. And there's not a ton of cities or places around the state that are using it or administering it, but it's still regulated through the state, and you have to have a license to administer it. So you can't set up a booth and administer psilocybin.
That's... Yeah. I think that maybe removing it would just make everything a little more clear, and limit some confusion.
Right. And again, like I said, I think this language was not aimed at psilocybin in particular. I think at some point, this language started circulating around the country dealing with the use of marijuana. So, yeah.
So can we ask staff to bring back... Well, first of all, you got a motion and a second?
We have a motion.
I have a comment.
Councilor Smith has. Councilor Smith?
My comment is that I think the language ought to come out because it's inaccurate. It's unlawful in federal court. Unlawful in federal... Unlawful federally might be the right, as you say.
In violation of federal law.
This offends my sense of plain language.
Yeah, I don't know who... I don't know where it came from, but yeah, it's definitely not very...
It is not clear.
No.
Councilor Novak?
I think I like how Councilor Smith put that. Where I needed clarification was, it said about things that are illegal. And things that are illegal are going to be illegal when you go for a permit, correct? You can't get a permit to do something illegal, right? So, and I hope we don't have to put that in the language for people to know that you can't do something illegal or you'll get in trouble. You know, I hope we don't have to put that language in. I hope if we take it out, we're not opening up any kind of really weird legal ease can of worms. No?
Councilor Combskins, do you have anything? So we have a motion and a second?
I have one more.
Okay.
One more point, just, yes, we can't do things that are illegal, but... And I understand that, you know, we can still have free speech, but with this in here, the federal government dictates, to some degree, what we can do on our city properties and through special events. So in the future, if something was illegal federally, and we actually, as a state, decided not, we don't think that's, you know, like we did with marijuana, or maybe we do something else, then the federal government has to dictate what we can do with our city or our state. So that's... I just don't want us to tie our hands on that. So that was another reason why I decided to pull that.
One small comment. It seems to me like this is a solution in search of a problem.
Right. So we have a motion and a second to remove the language from the ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Could staff bring back a modified resolution?
We have one. It's right here.
Oh, it is right here? Oh, it is. I didn't see that. I don't have it in my package.
Directing this to the city clerk, do we need to now ask for this ordinance to be read a first time and title only, and then on and on? I would request that the motion be read. Well, okay.
So, city attorney, would you please read the motion, ordinance and title only?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 6039, which amends Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VII, to clarify the issuance of parks and recreation permits and declaring an emergency.
I would move that we read the ordinance a second time and title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Will the city attorney please read the ordinance a second time and title only?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 6039, which amends Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VII, to clarify the issuance of parks and recreation permits and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion? Would a council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. We've amended an ordinance. Thank you very much, counsel. Counselor McGee, Montague. Next is... Are you done with your business?
Oh, no. Thank you. Sorry, that was my business. I had a constituent ask me about water billing issues. Do we have an ETA on a solution for that?
I would invite Chris Bailey to comment, but I know that the end of April is the projected date for switching entirely and exclusively to the new system.
Okay.
So the time that's being used until then is to align both systems and make sure the new one is working as needed.
That's all I needed, just a rough estimate of when we think that's going to happen. So thank you.
Can we get something out on social media with that, though? I mean, that'd be really helpful.
We do on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Ray Kupczynski?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening? Okay. Counselor Newton?
I have two things. One, I wanted to seek further clarification. I had a constituent reach out about the city's special event permit and associated fees related to security and safety planning for large events. I didn't see that we had a financial impact when we initially passed the Parks and Recreation...
No. So, and now this time I would invite Kim Ladeen to comment, but what you did was you authorized the special event permit as she put into her agenda packet. And part of that requires that, as we face increasingly large events, and we do not have the police and fire overtime budgets to provide the necessary public safety services, those organizers of those events are being asked to contribute to the public safety staffing for the events. And that is part... It's not in the ordinance, but it's in the application package that any permit applicant receives when they put in for that permit. And Kim, I'd ask you to comment further as appropriate.
That goes for any of our departments. I know there's been some discussion about police, but if anything were to happen with streets and they need additional barricades, anything like that, I know in the past when we've had folks come to Parks and Rec, ask for additional materials or time or staff, that due to our budget, we've had to bill them back for that time in addition to the permitting fee. So I think that was just something that is a conversation moving forward, and that is being brought up in this new process.
From what I understand, there's TLT monies for... That's budgeted for police and fire overtime. Is that correct? And what are the use cases for utilizing those funds?
Yes, and those are used for River Rhythms and Northwest Art and Air Festival, city-sponsored events. We're talking about a special event permit, which is for a private event, which we really don't know, you know, you can't really predict. You can predict some of them that are going to happen, but, you know, the block party that is now an annual event was not part of our calendar three or four years ago. So as those events... And there are other big events that are being proposed, and they put a burden on overtime that goes over and above what TLT provides for police and fire services.
Okay. And my constituent had mentioned that these funds could sometimes be used for tourism activities, such as the Veterans Day Parade, which is... Is that an official city-sponsored event?
The Veterans Day Committee, they're partners of ours, but that's not an official sponsored... The partnership is official, but it's not put on by the Parks Department.
Should they be paying for overtime, then?
And you know, I don't know if they... This time I'll ask Chief Harndon to comment. I don't know if the Veterans Day Parade pays for overtime. I don't have the answer to that. I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Great question. The only other entity prior to the current organizers of the Pride Event that asked assist with overtime funds has been the Block Party Group, which is a local business owner that runs that. Moving forward, that was our, kind of our tipping point for overtime costs. Moving forward, we're going to ask that private events start to contribute to offset public safety costs.
That includes the Veterans Day Parade?
Yes.
And then I have a follow-up question. If the private event is not able or secures a different form of security, if they hire private security instead, what are the implications or is that something that's still allowed with the permit? Or if it's just not within the budget, but they're able to hire private security?
Sure. One of the messages we try to get out to all the parties is that we'll work with you best you can with whatever budget you have, realizing this is new. On some events, for, for public safety purposes, it's essential that you have police and fire there, both for whether they're large crowd events, that brings a lot of people close together, whether there's a potential security threat against that particular event, whether there's alcohol served at that event, things like that. So with those three events, they're all very unique. Veterans Day Parade has a huge impact on downtown traffic flow, and a lot of that can be managed safely by police, not private security. The Block Party has the alcohol component and crowds in close proximity. And then the Pride Event comes with security threats to that event as well. So all of those would have a public safety component to it that we would require, at least from the Police Department, I won't speak on behalf of fire, to have some staff at those events, and they're going to vary depending on their size.
Okay. So I want to just make sure I heard you correctly on the first part. You said that you understood that this was a new fee and that you'd work with organizations. Is that, does that mean it's kind of a sliding scale? I want to understand, like, what is the impact or process for permit approval?
So what we do is whenever we get a permit come in, we look at the estimated crowd size, is there alcohol involved, are there any threats? Every time we have a large gathering, we always run it through the Oregon Fusion Center, looking for any threats against that, that group, and factor in how many officers we would typically need. In last year's case with Pride Event, we had the governor here, and that's always going to up our security costs or our security presence for that. So we look at the totality of the application and what they're looking for, crowd size, the makeup of the crowd, issues like alcohol, and then we make an estimate as far as what our staff would be needed for such event. And then we can fairly closely estimate what that might cost the vendor, and then work with them with whatever budget that they can make available.
And I think it's important to note that it's not a fee, it's semantics, but the fee, the permit fee is $120, $125. Right. And what we're talking about is helping with, bear the costs of that overtime. So that's not a, you know, it's not a, until you do the analysis that Chief Hornet just talked about, you don't know what the costs of that overtime are going to be.
So is it a requirement of the issuance of the permit or not?
Yes, the language in there talks about how you have to work with the provider of those services to understand what those costs are, and then, I can't remember the exact terminology, but you'll have to commit to helping with those costs.
It's cost recovery.
Counselor Montague had a question.
Yeah, thank you. So this is a change that just recently happened, right? Like you just now changed the policy where you're now doing the cost recovery?
We did it last year with the Block Party. Because they, 2023.
Okay, but was the regular events, you know, informed? My concern is that they, you know, these events didn't know until after they had already started their fundraising, and the potential impact to those events and those people, like, I know the Vets Parade, they're already fundraising, they've been here talking about how they're trying to secure funding. And so having this like, you know, unexpected, potentially large expense could discourage these events. And so I, I am concerned about that, and it sounds like we weren't very transparent in that, in this case, it sounded like that that was unexpected, and it is a large cost. So I want to make sure we're not discouraging these events because they are important and part of our, our community. So anything you can do to work with these events coordinators to make sure that, you know, this year it's not going to have a, a bad impact or potentially impact them, and then, you know, informing them that this is the way it's going to be in the future so that they can plan their fundraising around that. That's all I had to say.
Counselor Smith?
I am confused, as often happens. We're talking about a permit fee for the, charging a fee to issue a permit for the event, and we're talking about cost recovery. Those two things are not the same. Are the people who put on the events being charged cost recovery in addition to the permit fee?
That's a great question. I don't know if you rolled that into the $125 and the rest of it or not?
We did not. The $125 is to take care of administrative costs for routing it through to the different departments and having them have these conversations with program and event providers to determine what resources, what resources, oh my goodness, what resources are needed if there's holes in the plan and if they need to be communicating to any other agencies. So that's what the $125 covers.
That's what I thought when we approved the, the permit, it was the fee. If there are additional costs related to security and barriers and our staff time, that is a separate issue. Is that correct? Something that would, would now be negotiated with them, with the event organizers?
Correct. We'll do, we will do the best we can. We know that some events we're going to just have to have a presence at, and that's part of doing city business, but additional resources thrown at a special event will be, again, dictated based on the circumstances. This is not an uncommon practice in most cities. Albany is, is starting to roll that up. We'll do a better job of making sure we communicate that early and often with the organizers.
Counselor Kupczynski?
I would have to believe that with the history of the Veterans Parade and the Pride Parade now, that you already have numbers as to what the extra costs have already been incurred each year, and you could come up with a rolling average of how that might roll out to future events, attendance being same possibly.
Yeah, I can tell you what the Pride Event cost us in police-only overtime last year, and also what we've charged for the Block Party. So that, we can nail those down pretty quickly. That's why getting in the planning process early, knowing, are there VIPs coming? Obviously with the Block Party, if you have a really big act, it's going to draw a lot more people to the city, that's going to increase the presence, especially if alcohol involved. Of course, if you have the governor here, that's going to up things. So having a early and often conversation with the organizers is really important to identify the needs, and then that'll allow us to build out that costing model. And again, would never expect them to foot all the costs for overtime, it's part of what we do, but special events do have quite a drain on resources.
Thank you.
Do you have a percentage in mind for them to cover or?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a percentage of overtime that you're expecting?
I'm meeting with one of the organizers tomorrow, so no more on that.
And then I'm wondering, Director Ledain, if it would be prudent for us to add in the language, or maybe on the permit application process, maybe please apply 90 days before so we can have, have a...
Analysis time.
Yeah, explain, we need a little bit more of a leave time, we can't just like issue a permit and then do an event next week.
And so that is actually a part of the permit, but you guys don't see the physical permit and the language that's going on the website. So it's pretty lengthy. So, so yes, all that language is in there, talking specifically why we're asking for transportation plans, why we want to know how many, you know, recycling bins, where you're asking volunteers to park, are you notifying neighbors? All of that is kind of outlined in the packet, as well as we do have at least a 90-day turnover now for events, just because it used to be far, far shorter, far shorter, two weeks, and that is not appropriate or feasible for us to make sure that we move things through in a way that's beneficial for all. So, so yes, thank you for that suggestion, and I'm happy to say that that will be posted when, when it goes live.
Awesome. And I have one more thing. I just wanted to mention that I'm, as you guys know, I'm a huge farmer's market groupie. The next farmer's market, very first of the season, opening up on 4/20 at 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM, regular spot, so.
Saturday, right?
Saturday, yes. Super excited. And we now have someone that carries milk, which I think will be fun. We have a dairy farmer now at the farmer's market.
Okay, thank you, counselors. Counselor McGee?
I already went, I was first or second.
Second, okay, thank you. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. I had a couple of things that I wanted to mention. First, I'll, I'll start with the fun one. I was, I enjoyed the awards tonight for Tree City USA, 30 years, 30 years of caring for trees. I'm not going to say anything more about that. It's wonderful. And since I, I contacted Rick Barnett and Jay Sharp about two weeks ago, I was concerned about a number of trees on Del Rio Avenue in Deerfield Park. They were still covered with brown leaves, and they're huge trees. So I was concerned. Jay inspected them the same day, and he said they are Old English oaks, they are late bloomers. As of yesterday, they're covered with spring leaves, so I'm happy about that. I don't think I had anything to do with the timing, it was, it may have been the eclipse, not sure. The Adopt a Park program is really encouraging. All 33 parks have been adopted. I, I just had, I can't believe that, it's, it's wonderful. They're so neglected, and because, you know, we just can't be everywhere, but neighbors can be everywhere. And seeing that happen, it's, it's like an extension of the, let's open the ermine path. No, that's not going to really work because this is how the neighbors feel about it. I love to see people working in their neighborhoods, helping out, just doing it because it's there and because it's important to them, and that's the way a community is supposed to work. And that's what makes Albany strong. That's why we got the All America City Award in 1985 because of our volunteering, and look at it, it's still going strong 40 years later. The other thing that I wanted to say was a conversation I had with one of my friends at the Mennonite Village today about e-bikes. They're becoming a thing in the village and everywhere else, and they're wonderful. They're getting people back on bicycles who haven't been on them for a long time, or people are just switching over just because they're there and they're fun. We had a lengthy discussion about e-bikes in state law at the first meeting of the LOC Transportation Policy Committee last week. There are problems everywhere. It started with talking about the scooters, like the, the bird scooters that we used to have, and extended to e-bikes. Do they belong on bike lanes? Do they belong on sidewalks? Of course they don't, but some people don't understand that. Can they share space with other vehicles? What about on private streets? What about on major streets? Do they have to obey stop signs? And it went on and on and on. It's something that the league has talked about in the past about state regulations. There aren't any right now, and it's going to be part of the conversation, I think, going into the 25 legislature. And it, and it should be, because it's not safe for pedestrians or, or the people riding the bikes or cars, and, and it's another wonderful mode of low-impact, not talking about accidents, but, but low-impact on the environment types of transportation, active transportation, alternative to cars, but it needs to be, there needs to be rules that people follow so that everybody is safe and happy. So be looking for that more on, more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to expound on the e-bikes thing. I see a lot of people riding e-bikes without helmets, and on a motorcycle 35 miles per hour, like an e-bike can go. I was, you know, state motorcycle riders had to wear a helmet. I think it's just more safe if we look at some kind of ordinance about wearing a helmet with an e-bike. It's just dangerous if you tumble. Your brain, you only have one, and I've seen e-bike crashes before, and the two people were not wearing helmets. So it's something we should be discussing in the future. I will tell you this, the art in the city hall was fantastic. I had a blast, the local artists were here, some of the artwork was still out there, and it was really great to meet the artists and talk to them. And my appointee to the Arts Commission, she had her blown glass, and she was so proud to have people looking at it and wanting to buy it, so it was fantastic. And Madeline McGregor was there with her art, I think it was just, it was a great event. So I started my first variety there. It was fantastic. This weekend, let me go back to the awards. I think the people that received awards tonight earned it, our pillars of our community that have worked hard on behalf of their organizations, and the work that they're doing makes the city a much more appealing place to be, and I really enjoy seeing the smiles and then them very rewarded for the hard work that they do. So it's awesome, thank you. This weekend, well, yesterday, I was the emcee of the 18th Annual African-American Youth Leadership Conference at Oregon State University. 520 kids from all over the state, all different flavors, sizes and colors, and it was a great event, and I gave a, my workshop was on servant leadership, and a lot of these young men and women didn't know that they can volunteer or get jobs at their, their local cities and Parks and Rec and other departments. And so I brought up the websites from Eugene, Ben, and these kids did not know that they can apply for jobs for summer, and so I was pretty excited to have that feedback from parents that their kids applying for jobs at their local city Parks and Rec. H2O, why did I put water on here? Oh, water bills, that's, yes. So my phone has been blown up also about the water bill, so thank you, Counselor Montague, for asking about that, and thank you, Peter, for the reply on that. And one thing that I would like to talk about, yesterday, a football coach at South Albany High School brought to my attention that after a, one of the South Albany High School's basketball games, they won the playoff game, and they were coming home, a lot of the students had pulled off to the side of the road and were cheering them on, and one of our young men, Donovan Kane, the 12th grade, it was, South Albany High School, was hit by a car and almost died. He's in, he's in bad shape, but I was shocked that no one here knew about it, because I didn't know about it. And so I've asked Shay to run it up her flagpole and see if somebody can find out what's going on with him, but I'll be reaching out to the coach and finding if I can get ahold of his parents and see how he's doing. His name is Donovan Kane. And then, other than that, it was a great week, and it's sunny outside, so I'll shut up now and let the city manager take charge.
And you, wait, Chief Hornet, Kim, you can sit down, you can, you can go back. I wanted to address a couple of things, and normally I try to keep it really brief, but we've got a few things tonight. First of all, the purpose of automated red light cameras and speed cameras is to change behavior. It's not to raise funds. Having said that, funds have to be spent on that program. It doesn't come without costs, so we have to acquire the capability. We don't actually acquire the equipment, we acquire the capability. And when the funds come in, I think as you have been briefed before, they're used to run that program. And a certain amount of it goes to the company that provides the equipment, a certain amount of it goes to the officers, for the officers that review each of the citations, a certain amount of it goes to the court, and whatever is left over, if there's anything left over, goes or will go to funding traffic safety improvements. So, the, the, okay.
Yes. My understanding is that $86 from every citation also goes to the county, the state or the city, and we weren't told that when you were explaining this.
No, I think you were told.
We were told about how much goes, okay, I guess my ears didn't catch that.
And let me, let me just finish by saying, again, the goal is really to find a cost-effective way to change behavior. That's, that's, that's plain and simply the goal. It's not to, not to raise funds.
May I ask a follow-up question to that? Because I have been curious, and I've had some constituents ask me the same. Can I get information on how many students, people, children, bystanders, anyone who's ever been hurt, for instance, in front of either of those schools on North Albany Road?
If that...
I'm not saying I'm against this speed camera per se, I just would like the information as to how big of a problem have we had there?
We'll get you the stats, I can't, I don't have off the top of my head.
Thank you.
We can go back probably a decade and a half and look. I think we're very lucky that we haven't had some significant issues both on Queen, around West Albany and North Albany Middle School, but we've... But we've certainly seen the speeds there that raise that potential. As you know, we have a license plate reader radar trailer. That trailer does not have the capacity to issue tickets. But we did put it out there to do a study and, and got somebody coming down the hill at 134 miles an hour. And any, and.
Gibson Hill? Forgive me.
North Albany Road.
Yeah, so coming down Gibson Hill.
From the top, yeah, down North Albany Road, right in front of the school. So we're also trying to mitigate the potential of issues. And same thing with, with Queen. As you come into town off Oakville Road to, towards Elm, very rarely do people go 25 through there or drop to the designated speed limit of 20 miles an hour during the school zone. So these are areas that we actually put the trailer out to try to look at where are we having problems? And that helped us design where to put the cameras. The, there are other areas in the, in the city we've heard from, from residents as well. They're like, why aren't you putting it here? Well, the way the law is written, we only can put these cameras at signalized intersections. So some of our more vulnerable elementary schools and that don't have a signalized intersection near that. And so until they change that part of the law, we have to go with the other locations. And those were the four locations that we identified.
And can you confirm that there will be some sort of written warning prior to where the light is so that people? I mean, there is the school zone. I'm, school zones, it's kind of obvious, but still it, I guess it's a good thing to do. And I, I would be in favor of that, that people get a little reminder, hey, you're about to go into a school zone. It's Monday and school is in session. There is, you know, it'd be good to.
Sure. So there are school zones, uh, signs in our designated school zones in the city. We'll also fix photo enforcement ahead type. If you go near Queen and Gary, you'll see some signs, photo enforcement, intersection photo enforcement. We also have some signs as you enter the city. But I realize that people probably don't necessarily pay attention. I'll have to check with the company, but I believe we have some flashing amber lights that will be activated during school zone times, things like that. There is also a 30-day warning period. So once the cameras are installed and tested, we will do 30 days of, of letting people know they'll get written notices. Hey, you went through a, a red light camera, a speed camera. As well as, as you can imagine, we're giving every question under the sun. And we're cap, we're encapsulating those into a webpage, an FAQ page. So people can go to those and say, what happens if I get one? A common question is, well, will they, will the cameras know to when to adjust to 20 miles an hour and when to just back up on North Albany Road? And the answer is yes. You and I exchanged that email. So there's lots of questions, totally get that. We're going to try to put that all on a webpage so people can go and look at it.
Thank you.
Go, Peter.
Okay. The other thing to mention to you is that the next in our bi-weekly updates on utility billing will be coming out this, this Friday. So there'll be more information in that. Let's see here. Now, I wanted to address one thing that has appeared on social media a lot recently. And also if, if Matthew Rutgers wants to comment, invite him to do so. But our building official has been called out on social media quite a bit in the last couple of days. And we, we should be clear about one thing, that the building official has a job that is completely thankless. And in the cities that I've worked in and, and visited, they always had the worst building official in the world. It's not something that, that is an easy job to do. And he often has to be the bearer of bad news or delays how to implement the building code, the state's building code. So that's just something to keep in mind as, as, as his name is put out there, sometimes unfairly. Okay, the last thing is, on Monday evening, I promised you that the city attorney would address the legal ramifications of giving away money without having a, a program in place to do so. So I'll turn it over to Sean at this point.
Good evening again. So yeah, Peter asked me to briefly speak to you on that topic. I wasn't here Monday night, so I didn't get to hear the whole proposal of, of the minutes. But one of the things that, and I think we'll probably talk about these in, in future meetings, but the, the main issue right now is that as, as city council members and public officials, you, you, you have a, a burden, if you want to call it that, to protect the public's money. And so you have to be careful when you go out and, and are, are going to award or give public funds away to organizations or private parties, whatnot. Because if that's challenged and it would go to Circuit Court and if a, if a Circuit Court judge determined that those funds were, were misappropriated by the city council under ORS 294, the council can have and likely would have personal liability for the repayment of those funds. So it's, and it, and it's a burden that it's always been there. It's not new, but it's something that you, you know, it, it is why that this job is not, is not easy that you have. And, and why that, you know, you, it's very appreciated that you, you take that burden. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up so that when we talk about it later on, I know there's obviously a program we would have to go through, you know, if we were going to start awarding money. Again, criteria that would have to be established, findings that would be, you would have to come up with to support your decision that could be defended in court on a challenge and things like that. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any tonight. And if not, then we'll probably talk about this at a later meeting, so.
Okay, thank you, Sean. I'm, I'm going to move on to a few other things. Does anybody have questions for Sean about this? Okay. All right, so, so Monday night, there was, I sensed among the council, a desire to perhaps investigate a little further the idea of a program, to, to develop a program to implement. And there were some comments that probably need a little bit of clarification. We do have a historic preservation program. It's not an economic development function, but we do have a Landmarks Commission. We have a whole subsection of our code that addresses historic preservation. And economic development staff work with community development staff to help property owners who are interested in the historicity of their property. They help them to find resources. And Sophie can tell you a lot more about that. There are many sources for assistance and our staff regularly provide advice and consultation. When it comes to historic preservation, we have many properties that are worthy of preservation. You, you heard about our own airport on Monday evening and the need for resources to help maintain the original hangar at the oldest airport in Oregon. There are many other projects underway or being considered, each of which is sure to ask for funding if, if it is made available. Now, to, to develop a program, a program should reflect the council's careful and strategic approach. Given the limited resources that we have, which are not being replenished, where can we best deploy those resources to guarantee that the city returns or earns the best return on that investment? And when I say the best return on that investment, it's not necessarily monetary. It could be a public good, but it has to be evaluated against other potential returns on investment of other projects. What is the input? The recommendation from the Economic Development Advisory Committee, who's in place to provide such recommendations? They, the EDAC, would need to consider what are the desired outcomes of a program? What are we trying to accomplish? The city's own Economic Opportunities Analysis used data, existing data and stakeholder input to show that we should be focusing on light industrial and manufacturing. What industries are we targeting? What needs are we trying to fill? How would a program fit within and complement our existing work? Are these needs being met or not met by the private sector? Where are the funds to come from? We, in our Economic Development Fund, which is often referred to, those are one-time monies. You hear that term often when we build the budget. But they are one, they are truly one-time monies in that they're the proceeds from a lawsuit against Pepsi. Many of you who will know more about that than I will. Because of the work that the city did that had been performed in anticipation of bringing traded sector jobs to Albany. And are there other funding sources? And I'll go on with a few more questions. If, if we establish a revolving fund, a financing program, do we want loans or forgivable loans? Interest rate buy downs, loan guarantees, et cetera? Does the finance department have the capacity to administer another grant and loan program? Would we create competition with local banks, credit unions, the Small Business Administration, et cetera? And, and what are the opportunity costs? What would we not be able to fund? In the future, we have some significant priorities that will need to be funded or addressed somehow. Parking solutions, infrastructure improvements that will unlock developable areas. Many of the grants that we're able to ask for now require matching funds or some other sign of our commitment as a city to obtain those grant funds. And lastly, though it's not the, not the least important, is the issue of staff time. We have two economic development staff members. And we're tasking them right now with significant projects, including the multi-unit property tax exemption, the MPT, our downtown parking solutions, which is, you'll be briefed on in the near future. And that is growing as we speak. The potential for a business registration, the development of an economic development strategy, tax increment financing in East and South Albany, transient lodging tax collection from short-term rentals and recruitments of new businesses to Pepsi and Kempf properties. A program is a worthy effort, but we'll have to decide, you will have to decide, how much priority to give it. There's always more than enough work to keep departmental staff busy and work lists therefore have to be prioritized. If development of this program is a high priority, it'll necessarily move other existing projects down on the list or sideline them while we build a program. So in summary, while the council doesn't have the discretion to simply give away money, developing a, a program, a revolving loan fund or even a grant program is certainly possible. And the staff stand ready to implement the council's direction. And you don't need to take any direction tonight. Or you can ask me and we'll bring back further information on, on a program if you like. Or I'm happy to answer your questions in anticipation of that.
Counselor Dootson, I'm sure you have questions?
I do. I was wondering if you could get, you know, I mentioned a few meetings ago that I had been trying to find everything that we had spent the Pepsi money on. Is it possible to please get by the next meeting or as soon as possible, everything that we have used for Pepsi funds?
Uh, yes. Gina Jaeger, Finance Director, and Sophie are working on that.
Fantastic. Do we have a TBD?
I don't, I mean, they're working on it now. And I don't know what obstacles they're facing, but I'll find out if we can get it for the next week. We'll get it as soon as we possibly can.
Sounds great. Go ahead.
Counselor Monica?
Since I was the one that brought this up, I want to make sure that, that we do our due diligence. So I, I guess the only thing I would ask is that that does, the idea be brought back to EDAC. Maybe they evaluate our historical preservation program and all our other wonderful work that our economic development folks do. Is that enough? Or is there a gap that we maybe need to further look into? So I would like that just to be on their agenda for their next meeting, to have at least a, a discussion about it. And would love to hear their advice.
Mr. Mayor, the last thing I have for you is that the April 22, April 22 meeting is canceled. You'll recall that that was being held for a potential joint executive session with the Millersburg City Council on the CH2M Hill lawsuit. That, that's not a convenient date for their council. So we're back to looking for convenient dates. Plan B is to provide just two separate briefings, one for the Albany Council, one for the Millersburg Council.
So thank you. So thank you very much. Are you done, Peter? Great city manager's report. Our next meeting dates are May 6th. It's four o'clock here in Chambers and May, excuse me, yeah, May 6th and May 8th here in Chambers at 6:00 PM. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.